Good evening. The Florida Department of Transportation would like to welcome you to the public hearing for the State Road 20 Project Development and Environment, or PDNE, study. Financial project identification numbers 2206-35-5-22-01, and 2206-35-6-22-01. In addition to the PD and E staff here tonight, representatives from the District Right-of-Way Department are here and will be available after the public hearing if you have questions regarding right-of-way acquisition on this project. A transcript is being made of all oral proceedings and will be part of the public record for this project. Before we begin the presentation, I will share a few details to help you participate in this public hearing through GoToWebinar. On your computer or device screen, you should see an information window that looks like the one shown on the right side. To listen to the public hearing, your computer or device speakers are selected by default. If you prefer to listen by phone, select "Phone Call" in the control panel and dial and using the information provided. All virtual attendees will be placed in "Listen Only" mode for the duration of the public hearing. At a later date, we will provide responses to written comments that were submitted during online registration and those who submitted comments at the in-person venue. The comment period begins as soon as the presentation has ended. Verbal comments from in-person attendees will be addressed first. Verbal comments from virtual attendees will be addressed second. Providing verbal comments using GoToWebinar is simple. First, you must request to speak when registering to attend. During the comment period, the organizer will call your name that you provided during registration and unmute you. When the microphone icon is green, you are ready to make your comment. If the microphone icon stays orange, you will need to click the microphone icon once and it will notify you that you are unmuted and then you can provide your comment. You will not be on camera at any time during the formal presentation or while providing public comment. In-person participants will be called upon to speak first, followed by the virtual online speakers who wish to speak. If you dialed into the public hearing by telephone, your phone was automatically placed in "Listen Only" mode and will remain in "Listen Only" mode throughout the public hearing. Those attending in person and virtually may make a public comment when called upon. A recording of the webinar will be available on the project website three days after the public hearing. You can also call or email the FDOT project manager after the public hearing to request additional information. All comments must be submitted or postmarked by Friday, August 2, 2024, to become part of the official record. Prior to the public hearing, draft engineering and environmental documents were made available for public review at the Ebro Town Hall and Gulf Coast State College North Bay Campus since June 25, 2024, and will continue to be available at these locations through Friday, August 2, 2024. Ebro Town Hall is open 8:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. Monday through Thursday, and Gulf Coast State College is open 8:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. Monday through Friday. The Ebro Town Hall is located at 6629 Dog Track Road in Ebro, Florida. Gulf Coast State College North Bay Campus is located at 637 Highway 2300 in Southport, Florida. The draft engineering and environmental documents were also made available at the project website, and will continue to be available at the project website after this hearing. You may also view project documents tonight at the in-person public hearing. The purpose of this public hearing is to share information with the general public about the proposed improvements, the conceptual design, all alternatives under study, and the potential benefits and disadvantages pertaining to social, economic, and environmental impacts upon the community. The public hearing also serves as an official forum providing an opportunity for members of the public to express their opinions regarding the project. This study satisfies the National Environmental Policy Act, or NEPA, and other policies, regulations, and procedures. There are three primary components to tonight's public hearing. First, the open house, which occurred prior to this presentation where you were invited to view the project displays, speak with the project team, and provide comments in writing or to the court reporter. Second, this presentation, which will explain the project's purpose and need, study alternatives, potential impacts, both beneficial and adverse, and proposed methods to mitigate adverse project impacts. And... Third, a formal comment period following this presentation, where you will have the opportunity to provide verbal statements, or for those at the in-person location, may provide comments directly to the court reporter or in writing. This environmental study has been conducted by FDOT District 3 in compliance with all applicable federal environmental laws and pursuant to 23 U.S. Code 327 and the Implementing Memorandum of Understanding between the FDOT and the Federal Highway Administration, or FHWA. Signed on May 26, 2022, the FDOT Office of Environmental Management in Tallahassee is the approving authority. This public hearing was advertised in the Washington County News, Panama City News Herald, and the Florida Administrative Register, and was noticed consistent with the federal and state requirements shown on the slide. Public participation at this hearing is encouraged and solicited without regard to race, color, national origin, age, sex, religion, disability, or family status. Persons wishing to express their concerns about Title VI may do so by contacting either the FDOT District 3 office or the Tallahassee office. This contact information is displayed on the screen, at the sign-in table at this public hearing, and in the handout. FDOT is conducting a Project Development and Environment, or PDNE, study for this project. The PD and E process is used to evaluate potential impacts to determine an alternative utilizing a continuous community outreach process to ensure all interested parties have meaningful participation in the process. Public input and information received at the public hearing will be taken into consideration when preparing the final documents for this study. The virtual project update was held on June 20, 2023. Following this public hearing, FDOT will finalize the study documents and conclude the study in late 2025. The design of the project limits within Washington County limits is funded. The right-of-way acquisition and construction have not yet been funded. The study limits extend along State Road 20 from State Road 79 in Washington County to US 231 in Bay County, approximately 27.2 miles in length. State Road 20 is a critical east-west roadway and serves as a hurricane evacuation route. There are several nearby design projects along State Road 20. The State Road 20 from State Road 79 to the Bay County Line in Washington County Design Project is concurrent with and will be cleared through this PDNE study. Right-of-way acquisition and construction are not currently funded in the FDOT five-year work program. Additional design projects within or adjacent to study limits include State Road 20 bridges over Econfina Creek and Spring Branch in Bay County, and State Road 20 from west of Freeport City Hall to Black Creek Boulevard in Walton County, This design project is west of the PDNE study limits. The purpose of this project is to improve State Road 20 from State Road 79 to US 231 to accommodate hurricane evacuation traffic, to address the deficient roadway profile where it is below the design flood elevation, and to improve safety conditions for vehicular traffic to reduce the crash rate that is twice the statewide average. This project is needed to increase hurricane evacuation and safety by increasing capacity on State Road 20. Additionally, two segments of the existing State Road 20 profile are below the design flood elevation near River Lake and Econfina Creek. The project is also needed to address safety issues leading to a crash rate over twice the statewide average for similar facilities. State Road 20 from State Road 79 to Bay County Line, FMN 2206-35-5-22-01, is listed in the Emerald Coast Regional Council Regional Rural Transportation Plan, Current National Highway Funded Projects. The current PDNE study is in the Comprehensive Plan, Five-Year Transportation Plan for Washington County. State Road 20 improvements are also identified as a future need within Ebro City Limits and east of Ebro City Limits to Bay County Line. The design is funded from State Road 79 within Ebro City Limits to the Bay County Line, FMN 2206-35-5-22-01. Additionally, the corridor is included in the list of roadways impacted heavily during hurricane evacuation orders. The Bay County Transportation Planning Organization, or TPO, has identified the widening of State Road 20 from two to four lanes from Washington County Line to US 231, FMN 2206-35-6-22-01, in the 2045 Long Range Transportation Plan, or LRTP, updated August 2023 for both the Needs Plan and Cost Feasible Plan. In the Bay County TPO Transportation Improvement Program, or TIP, the Preliminary Engineering Phase for State Road 20 from Washington Bay County Line to US 231, FMN 2206-35-6-22-01, was funded for PDNE in fiscal year 2021/22. To satisfy the purpose and need identified for the project, the preferred alternative includes the following primary improvements: One, widen State Road 20 to four lanes to provide additional capacity for daily and evacuation traffic. Two, reconstruct deficient segments of State Road 20 above the design flood elevation. Three, improve safety conditions by enhancing capacity and adding a restrictive median. We will now discuss each of these primary changes included in the preferred alternative. The existing State Road 20 is an east-west two-lane undivided roadway in Washington and Bay Counties with two 12-foot travel lanes and five-foot paved shoulders, generally within 200 feet of right-of-way. State Road 20 is classified as a rural principal arterial. The surrounding lands are sparsely settled agricultural, grassland, woodland, and wetlands. The preferred alternative proposes widening to a four-lane divided roadway from State Road 79 to US 231, including a 40-foot grass median, eight-foot inside shoulders with four feet paved, two 12-foot travel lanes in each direction, and 12-foot outside shoulders with five feet paved. Within the limits of the roadway that are not being raised or realigned, the existing roadway will be milled and resurfaced to preserve the existing roadway to accommodate the future eastbound traffic. Two new lanes will be built along the north side of the existing roadway to accommodate the future westbound traffic. Within the limits of the roadway that are being raised or realigned, four new travel lanes will be constructed and centered within the proposed right-of-way. The existing bridge over Pine Log Creek will be replaced with two new independent structures. The eastbound bridge will provide two 12-foot travel lanes, a 12-foot outside shoulder, and a six-foot inside shoulder. The westbound bridge will provide two 12-foot travel lanes, a 10-foot outside shoulder and a 12-foot inside shoulder. The eastbound outside shoulder and the westbound inside shoulder are wider than standard requirements in order to provide sufficient stopping site distance for vehicles traveling along the roadway curve. The existing bridge over Spring Branch will be replaced with a new, single bridge providing four 12-foot travel lanes, 10-foot outside shoulders, four-foot inside shoulders, and a 40-foot median with a raised concrete separator. The existing bridge over Econfina Creek will be replaced with two new independent structures. The eastbound bridge will provide two 12-foot travel lanes, a 10-foot outside shoulder, and a 10-foot inside shoulder. The westbound bridge will provide a 10-foot outside shoulder and a six-foot inside shoulder. The inside shoulder width will be wider on the eastbound bridge to accommodate an interim two-lane two-way bridge replacement under a separate project. State Road 20 will be reconstructed in the area of Econfina Creek to raise the profile above the 100-year floodplain elevation and to flatten the vertical curves to meet current criteria. Full reconstruction of the existing roadway is also proposed in other segments of the project where similar deficient conditions currently exist. State Road 20 is assigned Access Classification 3. Under Rule 14-97 of the Florida Administrative Code, access class 3 facilities should have restrictive access limited requiring a minimum of 660 feet between driveways, 1,320 feet between directional median openings, and 2,640 feet between full median openings, and between signals. The existing two-lane State Road 20 does not have a median restricting access. The proposed improvements include adding a new median separating the eastbound and westbound travel lanes. The new median will have 64 total full and directional openings that all meet or are within 10% of the spacing requirements outlined in Rule 14-97. An important element of this PD and E study was to evaluate the potential project impacts and benefits. A wide range of environmental effects were evaluated, including various social, cultural, natural, and physical features, and were documented in the environmental document. The engineering and traffic factors were also considered. Impacts to resources are further discussed for the preferred alternative on the following slides. A comparison of the impacts for the preferred alternative are provided in the project documents. The total construction cost of the preferred alternative is approximately $363 million. Based on the project evaluation, the FDOT has determined there are no adverse or disproportionate impacts to low-income, minority, or protected population groups by the proposed improvements. The right-of-way acquisition is expected to involve partial takes at 126 parcels. No relocations are anticipated as part of the proposed improvements. Additional right-of-way will need to be acquired in sections of the roadway where the vertical profile will be raised or at the intersections that will be realigned. The sites are documented in the Preliminary Engineering Report available here tonight. All right-of-way acquisition will be conducted in accordance with Florida Statute 339.09 and the Federal Uniform Relocation Assistance and Real Property Acquisition Policies Act of 1970, commonly known as the Uniform Act. If you are required to make any type of move as a result of a Department of Transportation project, you can expect to be treated in a fair and helpful manner and in compliance with the Uniform Relocation Assistance Act. The right-of-way specialist who is supervising this program is here tonight and will be happy to answer your questions. Section 106 of the Natural Historic Preservation Act requires agencies to consider the effects of their actions on cultural resources. One historic site eligible for listing on the National Register of Historic Places, the Atlanta and St. Andrews Bay Railroad, was identified within the study area. There are no adverse effects to this resource or other cultural resources as a result of the project's improvements. Concurrence from the State Historic Preservation Office on the Cultural Resources findings was received in October of 2023 and February of 2024. In accordance with Section 4F of the Department of Transportation Act of 1966, the Florida Department of Transportation has identified Econfina Creek Wildlife Management Area as a Section 4F property. FDOT is seeking comments from the public concerning the potential effects on the activities, features, and attributes that may result from the widening of State Road 20 along both sides of the roadway. Econfina Creek Wildlife Management Area is located on both sides of the roadway, east of State Road 77. No impacts are anticipated to the activities, features, and attributes of Econfina Creek Wildlife Management Area, however, FDOT will require 22.4 acres of right-of-way adjacent to State Road 20 for the roadway widening. Additionally, improvements to the Econfina Creek Bridge and Spring Branch Crossing will increase both the vertical and horizontal clearance over the floodplain at Econfina Creek. The Pitt and Sylvan Springs Park and Econfina Creek Canoe Launch within the Wildlife Management Area will experience temporary impacts during construction, including closure and detour. Following the public comment period and consideration of any input received, the FDOT intends to pursue a de minimis impact determination on this resource. The improvements proposed as part of this study are anticipated to result in a low potential impact to wetlands and floodplains. The preferred alternative is anticipated to impact 45.83 acres of wetlands and 4.22 acres of other surface waters and 490 acre-feet of floodplains within the study area. Additionally, the preferred alternative crosses Econfina Creek, listed on the National Rivers Inventory and is adjacent to Gainer Springs, an outstanding Florida waters and Florida first magnitude spring. The project was evaluated for potential federal and state threatened and endangered species. The project may affect the eastern indigo snake and protected mussels, including the spiny pocketbook, Gulf moccasin shell, and oval pig toe. The project may affect, but is not likely to adversely affect, the reticulated flatwood salamander. Additionally, the project may affect, but is not likely to adversely affect, the plant species Harper's beauty, paper nailwort, Godfrey's butterwort, Florida skullcap, gentian pinkroot, and Cooley's meadow rue. There are no impacts anticipated to essential fish habitat. Coordination with the U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service on the study's natural resources occurred in February of 2024. Effects to the physical environment were evaluated as a result of the proposed improvements. One of the 92 noise receptors analyzed for the study were identified to have the potential to be impacted by the widening of State Road 20. No noise barriers are anticipated to be installed as part of the State Road 20 project. There are 20 potentially contaminated sites adjacent to the project. Potential contamination sites include two high-risk sites, seven medium-risk sites, and 11 low-risk sites. The "No Build or Do Nothing" alternative is also considered a viable alternative and will remain so for the duration of the study. Under this alternative, no improvements, except routine maintenance would be made to State Road 20 within the project corridor. This evaluation matrix represents the right-of-way acquisition requirements and the environmental impacts for the "No Build" and "Preferred Alternatives." The "No Build" alternative would have no cost associated with design or construction of the project, and there will be no disruption due to congestion. The "No Build" alternative will result in increased traffic congestion and travel times and does not enhance roadway safety. The preferred alternative will address the evacuation traffic improvements by widening to four lanes, profile deficiency improvements by raising the roadway, and improved safety conditions by improving capacity and adding a median. Under the "Build" alternative, there are minimal potential impacts to social, cultural, and physical resources. Protected species have potential high impacts. The total preliminary cost of the project, including design, right-of-way acquisition, and construction phases is approximately $509.2 million. Thank you. That concludes the formal presentation. We will now begin the public comment period of the public hearing. The next step is to incorporate input from this public hearing into our decision-making process. Persons wishing to make a statement or present views regarding this project will now have an opportunity to do so. There are multiple ways to provide your comments, written or verbally. If you do not wish to speak at the microphone, you may provide your comments in writing. Every comment method carries equal weight.
We will now call upon in-person participants who have requested to speak. If you would like to speak and have not yet completed and turned in a speaker card, please raise your hand. As I call your name, please step up to the microphone and state your name and address before making your comment. If you represent an organization, municipality, or other public body, please provide that information as well. We ask that you limit your comments to three minutes. Okay, it looks like we have no in-person comments. So this includes the in-person comments. At this time, we're going to turn it over to our online moderator, Jennifer Brownfield, who will now call upon our online participants who requested to speak at registration.
Thank you, Sheri. For those wishing to offer public comments virtually, I will call your name and then unmute you. Please make sure to also unmute your microphone on your end using the GoToWebinar control panel, as shown on this slide. When it's your turn to speak, please state your name and address before making your comment. If you represent an organization, municipality, or other public body, please provide that information as well. Again, we ask you limit your comments to three minutes. And before you speak, make sure that you are not self-muted, which you can undo by clicking the microphone icon in the control panel. If you did not ask to speak when you registered, but you would like to do so now, please use the "Raise Your Hand" feature, and I will call on you once we have heard from those who have previously registered to speak. The first person we have requesting to make a public statement is Marcy Brock. Marcy, I'm unmuting you now, and you can make your public comment. Make sure you unmute yourself.
Am I muted?
We can hear you.
Okay, you said my name and address, Marcy Brock. And it's 3904 Amy Lane, Chippely, Florida, 32428. We actually live in Sunny Hills. And we commute on Highway 20 very often, several times a week, for work and for leisure. And we just would really appreciate that the DOT and anyone that's in charge of approving the funding for this, that they, you know, would be able to fund it appropriately because this is a very heavily traveled road. I see accidents reported on the news and on social media very often. And I just feel like it's a very needed project that needs to really move forward as quickly as possible for the public's safety. I'm sure that there's been a lot of data done about or taken about all the accidents that happen on Highway 20. So I feel like it's really needed, and I appreciate all that y'all do. And we look forward to this moving forward as quickly as possible. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Marcy. That is all of the folks who've registered ahead of time to provide a comment. Is there anyone else joining us online who did not pre-register to make comments who would now like to make a comment? If so, please use the "Raise Your Hand" function, and I will call on you. Okay, I do not see any additional participants with their hand raised, so I'm going to send it back to you, Sheri. Thank you.
Thank you, Jennifer. So this concludes the public comment period. I would like to thank everyone for taking the time to share your comments concerning the State Road 20 PDNE study. You may continue to submit your written comments after tonight's public hearing, but they must be postmarked or emailed by Friday, August 2, 2024, to become part of the official public hearing record. Written comments can be mailed or emailed to the FDOT project manager, Nicole Arant, whose contact information is shown on this slide and the handouts you receive tonight. You may also visit our project website at www.nwfloridaroads.com/calender to further view documents and submit comments. The exact transcript of this hearing's oral proceedings, together with all written materials received as part of the hearing record and all studies, displays, and informational material provided at the hearing, will be made part of the project decision-making process and will be available for public review upon request. I hereby officially close the public hearing for the State Road 20 PDNE study from State Road 79 to US 231 in Washington and Bay Counties at 6:30. Have a good evening, and please drive safely.